Welcome Tigers and guests to our Suncoast Tiger Bay Virtual Event. My name is Joanna Cheshire. I am Vice President of the Suncoast Tiger Bay Club and your host for this virtual panel discussion. So joining us is Amy, who you just heard from. She will be assisting with the questions during the Q and A portion of the presentation. So you can just insert your questions right into the chat. Local elections impact our community and our everyday lives. The Suncoast Tiger Bay Club serves as a civic commons where thought leaders and citizens of all political stripes come together to discuss the pressing issues of our time. These conversations are always important, but in these challenging weeks, they have taken on a new tone and a much deeper meaning. Even though we cannot be together at our regular monthly luncheons, Suncoast Tiger Bay will keep the conversation going through virtual events just like this one. Please help support our continuing commitment to bringing you timely and informative programming by becoming a member, renewing your membership, or just donating today. A donation of $25 or $35, what you would have spent on a Tiger Bay luncheon will help sustain our club during these tough times and allow us to continue to keep you informed and connected to our community. So with that said, I would like to thank everyone on the webinar for joining us for the Pinellas County School Board District 7 Candidate Forum. We have so much important content to cover, so let's get started here. It is with great pleasure that I introduce our moderator, Graham Brink. Graham oversees the op ed content as the editor of editorials for the Tampa Bay Times. And thank you so much for your time and joining us today, Graham. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to introduce our candidates. Right now, we have three of the four that are running for District 7 with us. We have Caprice Edmond, Corey Givens, and Carl Nurse. As far as we know right now, Dr. Sharon Jackson is not with us. She may join us here in a minute. And in just a minute, I'm going to give them all three minutes to introduce themselves. But first, some really quick background on the Pinellas County School District. Whoever ultimately wins this race will become one of the seven members of the Pinellas County School Board. The Pinellas County District is the eighth largest district in the state and I believe the 27th largest in the country. It's a very large district, more than 100,000 students and a budget of $1.5 billion. And whoever wins this race will have a say in policies and how to spend that money. So I'm going to start off by letting each of the candidates speak for three minutes. So each one of you, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself and then explain to the listeners and the viewers why you think you'd be the best person for this job. So Caprice, why don't we start with you and make sure you unmute yourself?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Tiger Bay, for hosting this forum and thank you to our guests for participating. I am running for this seat because I know the importance of education. Born and raised here in St. Petersburg, I attended our public schools. Graduating from Gibbs High School, I went to USF where I earned my master's degree in educational leadership, a master's in elementary education, a bachelor's degree in psychology, and a certification in infant family mental health. My life's work has been to children and education. Currently, I'm an educator for Pinellas County Schools. And what I'm seeing is that we do need some improvements. We need equity in education and my platform is based on that. Prior to becoming an educator, I worked with youth and foster care. And some of the things that I've noticed were a lack of life skills training and guidance. So I was tasked with supporting them. I transitioned to teaching because I knew that education is the foundation for success. And now here I am, running to improve education. Our community, our children, and our future are depending on us to get this right. And I look forward to bringing equity in education. My platform focuses on academic success, school safety, family engagement, and strategic partnerships, as well as retaining and recruiting the best educators. And most of my work has been directly related to those, to my platform. Currently, I serve on the Board of Florida Education Association as a goals and budget member. I'm also on the Governance Board, as well as the Chair of Teacher Program Policy Committee. I am the past Chair of Florida Young Remarkable Educators. So when it comes to recruitment and retention, I've been learning lots of strategies that I can bring to the Board. And with family engagement, I serve as the Grants Chair for Pinellas County Council, PTA. And we earned a national grant related to transformative family engagement and engaged our stakeholders. So again, this is me putting practice, things that I've experienced to better prepare our schools for family engagement. I am actively involved in our community, serving on the South Side CRA, the Youth Development Grant Review Committee, and other initiatives throughout the county, including Complete Count Committee. I am invested in our children, our community, and our future. Thank you.
Thanks, Caprice, and thank you for keeping it just under three minutes. We appreciate that. Corey, why don't we move to you? You have three minutes to introduce yourself and tell us why you are the best candidate for this, for this job.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is good to be back in the virtual den. Thank you so much, Graham, for hosting this today. We certainly appreciate you giving us this free platform for everyone to listen to our opinions, to value our platforms, and certainly educate themselves on the issues and the candidates. I'm a proud product of Pinellas County Schools and a proud son of St. Petersburg. I believe that my education, my public school education, has a lot of the opportunities that I never could have imagined or dreamed of. I believe in the funding of and dedication to public school education. I am the only candidate in this race who has the energy, experience, and enthusiasm to get this job done. I want to carry on the progress that Renee Flowers established in District 7. I'm running as a candidate who's unbought and unbossed because I believe that we should put our students first. They are our most precious asset and most valued product. So it takes someone without, not only experience in education, but a background in business, someone who understands that we have to market and sell our schools because everyone wants to come to Pinellas County so that they can live, work, and play. It's what brings businesses here and what creates jobs. I'm a third generation of St. Petersburg. I've attended some of the top schools in Pinellas County, including Pinellas County, excuse me, Pasadena Fundamental, South Side Fundamental, and Lakewood High School where I graduated from the CAF program. I served as a student ambassador to Takamatsu, Japan. And I believe that other students should be afforded those same opportunities to broaden their horizons and explore worlds beyond just St. Petersburg. In my spare time, I dedicate my resources and my leisure to serving students in Pinellas County as a mentor in the Big Brothers Big Sisters Program. I also volunteer my time as a member of the Parents' Support for Education Council and the NAACP where I've served as second Vice President. I've also served my neighborhood on the local level because I think that's where the solutions are found, the problems plaguing our communities and our schools at the street level. I've been president of my neighborhood association. I've worked with the Council of Neighborhood Associations, working with diverse people from various backgrounds who share the same lived experience to find solutions. When you talk about solutions, you need new ideas, new solutions. So I ask you, are we better off than we were four years ago, eight years ago, 12 years ago? My opponents have been in education, but yet they've been silent on the issues that matter most. And so we need a fresh perspective. We need someone with a diverse background, someone who will go to Largo and speak truth to power. I value community commitment. I value business partnerships. And I believe that we need a long-term plan, a plan that's going to work to shut down the school-to-prison pipeline and close the achievement gap. I'm committed to motivating our families so that we can increase through the potential. I'm Corey Givens Jr., and you can visit me online for more information at www.corygivens.com. I look forward to earning your vote in August, April.
Thanks, Corey, again. Under three minutes. Carl, can we go three for three in under three minutes? Explain to the listeners who you are and what would make you the best candidate for this job?
Good afternoon. I'm Carl Nurse. Many of you may know me, but you can, and you can tell by my gray hair that I've been working in this area about 25 or 30 years more than the first couple of folks. I guess that's a double-edged sword, but I've lived in Pinellas County since 1959. I moved to St. Petersburg in 1977. I graduated from Clearwater High. My children, my youngest graduated from Gibbs, my oldest from, oldest two, rather, from Northeast High. So I have long roots here. When I was a young man, I worked in legislature for six years. My boss in the state senate was a, had been head of the Classroom Teachers Association and served on the Education Committee. So I, I got to see that up close. There was a time when, when Florida funded education, at least we were in the middle of the group, not the, not the last five. And that was, that was years when I worked up there. I have run a business for the last 35 years. And I've been involved in the community for dozens of organizations over my entire life, from running my neighborhood association for half a dozen years to Kona for three years, being on the Planning Commission and including being Chair, and the same with the Historic Preservation Commission. Recently, maybe one of the most important things that I, that I helped do with Ken Welch was we created the CRA for the South Side, which will generate $60 million of guaranteed money over about 30 years. In my spare time, I have largely worked on affordable housing. I chair two affordable housing nonprofits and, and serve on the Habitat Board. I've been up close involved in about 80 affordable housing units in the South Side of St. Pete over the last decade. All of those nonprofits. I would like you to just to imagine what the world would be like if we caught all of our children up by the time they were in third grade. I want you to imagine what, what, what the future would be like for our children if we provided a clear path for them to the middle class. And, and that means that not only providing a path for those who are college-bound, but provide a path for those who are, who are not college-bound, or at least not a four-year degree bound. There are, there will be millions of middle-class jobs that do not require a degree. And we do, as a country, a really terrible job connecting our, our children and grandchildren with, with those jobs. Let me just use one illustration of healthcare. There'll be millions of people retiring, actually tens of millions are retiring. There'll be millions of jobs needed in the healthcare field, almost all of them paid, middle-class jobs. We need to connect children so that they understand in high school that there's a path for them to, to get a decent job. And so we have to work at the front end, you know, the under, under, under third grade and, and, and the high school end. And if we do both of those, we can provide a much better future for our children.
Dr. Jackson, I see you've joined us. Thanks so much. We're giving each candidate three minutes to explain like who you are and why you'd be the best, best person for this job. So go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'll thank you for allowing me to participate in this forum and to share my beliefs and for platform. Hello, everyone. My name is Sharon Jackson, and of course, I'm a candidate for School Board District 7. I'm the most qualified and the best candidate for this seat. I not only have a theoretical background knowledge, but practical experiences as well. I served in this school district for more than 30 years. So I've been around as long as Carl. I've been a teacher, school counselor, assistant principal, and principal at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, working in diverse communities. I have a BA in Special Education, Master's in School Counseling, and a doctorate in Educational and Organizational Leadership. I've taught education courses at the college level. And I have continued to volunteer in my community. The success of public education is closely connected to the strength of our community. So I have some specific goals and ideas that I would like to share with you today. My platform is student-focused on excellence, equity, and engagement. As a school board member, I will continue to make student success priority number one. Teachers and staff should be recognized and receive competitive pay in order to recruit and retain them. Did you know that the average pay for teachers was down 4.5% nationally as of April 2020? It is important to establish high expectations for everyone, including the superintendent. As a school board member, I believe visibility and transparency are essential with open and honest dialogue between the community and the board. We need to adopt a budget with the needs of the students in mind. Resources need to be distributed equitably amongst schools. Continue to implement with fidelity and monitor Bridge the Gap Plan. We need to remove unnecessary spending on non-effective programs. I will promote equity among vendors who service various projects in the district to ensure diversity. And finally, cultural, relevant, and culturally competent teaching must occur with ongoing staff development required. It's important to be supportive of the progress the district has made, such as increased graduation rate, while recognizing there is still a need for improvement in this district. My efforts as a school board member will be to serve all children and their families in our diverse communities. Finally, I pledge to work collaboratively and diligently with my colleagues, school officials, teachers, parents, and members of our community to address any inequities and district challenges that may occur. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. So I'm going to ask a few questions here, but to the audience, please send your questions in where we want to get your, your voice in this as well. Corey, I'm going to start with you with this question. I'm going to ask, how would you address racial and ethnic disparities in academic achievement if you were elected to the school board?
Well, first and foremost, I think it's important to recognize that I'm a black man running in a race at a time when black men are being gunned down all across America. Students need to see a reflection of them in the classroom. So first thing I would do is focus on the recruitment and then the retention of minorities, especially males. We need more men in the classroom. We need more men who are going to teach our students, not just things that are going to help them succeed in the workforce, but things that will help them succeed in life. Life skills are important. So students need opportunities. Not every child is going to go to college and certainly not every child is college material. So it's important that we provide our students with opportunities that can help them reach success in the American dream. I work currently at Pinellas County Job Corps Center, working to help students gain not only high school diplomas, but also obtain technical certifications in jobs that are industry-demanding jobs, jobs that pay living wages, because that's what it's about, making sure that we pay our students what they're worth, because they are our most valued asset. So again, I would make sure that there's diversity in the classroom. I would make sure that we're allowing principals the autonomy to go out and to recruit for their own schools, because at the end of the day, principals know best what works for their schools. So we can't say there's one-size-fits-all solutions. We have to get creative. We have to think outside the box. And again, we have to embrace diversity, because at the end of the day, when there's 19,000 students who are African-American in Pinellas County Schools and 43,000 students who are white, but African-Americans are significantly suspended at a higher rate than their white counterparts, we have to agree that there's a systematical issue and we have to change the system. And the only way we're going to do it is from the top down with a bottom-up approach.
Thanks, Corey. Sharon, do you want to take that question? How would you address racial and ethnic disparities in academic achievement?
I agree with Corey that we do need to address diversity and bring in teachers and staff that look like the kids who attend the schools. One of the problems with retention is teacher pay. The other problem is sometimes teachers are, they'll take a job in a school that is low performing and then find out it's too difficult. So they'll request a transfer later. So we need to provide some incentives for teachers to stay here, stay in our district and want to, you know, want to be in schools like the low-performing schools.
Carl, do you want to take that question? How would you address or tackle the racial and ethnic disparities in academic achievement?
Well, one of the stunning things when you look at the school system is that 19 of the elementary schools in this quarter of the county have more than 40% of their children living in poverty. So we have an unfortunately fairly widespread surplus of students who are coming with a challenge. And I think of it as a 100-yard dash where we've got about 40% of the kids who have to run 130 yards because, because they start off behind. One of our needs is to, is to make sure that we, we put additional resources for the students who have to run the 100-yard or 130-yard dash versus 100-yard dash. And so sometimes you do that through Title I funding, but I think it's very clear that it's going to take additional focused resources in the schools with the students who are challenged the most. And, you know, one of the things that I experienced when I worked at Melrose Elementary is a huge number of rookie teachers. And frankly, if we're going to put rookie teachers with the heart with the schools that are the most behind, we need to make sure that they have enough mentoring help to go through the, the learning curve that they have themselves.
Thanks, Carl. Caprice, over to you. You're muted, so please take yourself off mute. And could you answer the same question?
So many of the people, many of the panelists have shared some of the things that I would use, but I want to be specific as it relates to equitable resources for all, all schools and all students, whether you are a low-performing school or you haven't been deemed a low-performing school. Our students have needs. And as previously mentioned, we have a challenge here. There are food deserts, housing issues, employment issues, and meeting the needs of the whole child, that's how we get started with closing the achievement gap. And when it comes to recruitment and retention, retaining educators, it's important that our students see people that look like them, that can relate to them. And some of the things that I've been working on is teacher recruitment through Pinellas Classroom Teacher Association and Florida Education Association. So again, I look forward to bringing some of the strategies that I've learned and best practices to our school board. It's also important that our administrators are able to weigh in. Oftentimes, there's an approach where administrators have to do certain things a certain way. And what I've seen, most of our administrators have the best interest of their school and students in mind, so they should have that autonomy when it comes to deciding who they employ or not. And as previously mentioned, having that professional development to support our new educators. I was a new educator. I started out at Melrose after school had began, and it was challenging. But with persistence and the right support, even a new educator can do well in our schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Caprice. Stay, stay unmuted because I'm going to come right back to you with this question. And I'm going to give you, give you one minute to answer this one. As you all know, Michael Grego is the Superintendent of Pinellas County Schools. What grade would you give him over the last few years? Caprice?
Hi, this is a great question. Dr. Grego, there is, what grade? I would give Dr. Grego a C. Being honest, there are many things that he's done, actually, yeah, a C+. There are many things that he has done to support our schools, and there are many things that we can continue to do in order to have 100% student success. And that includes equitable resources for all schools and students. Thank you.
Sharon, can you answer that question? You're muted right now, so take yourself off mute. And can you answer that question? What grade would you give Superintendent Michael Grego?
I would give Dr. Grego probably a B-. I know that he makes the effort to make his rounds around the county to communicate with the families about different issues that are going on. For example, the Bridge the Gap Plan, there are goals in that plan that, and targets that the, that he and the school board in the district is trying to achieve. But one area is still missing. I know we, we hit the target and above for graduation rate, but student achievement, student achievement, we really need to focus on and as well as teacher recruitment and bringing in resources and distributing equitably.
Thanks, Sharon. Carl, do you want to take that? A grade for Dr. Grego?
I would give Dr. Grego an A. I don't know if you remember, but you know, we had five superintendents in about five years immediately before him. And when he arrived, you know, the, the paper did a big story about the so-called failure factories. He has been given a rough hand and frankly, has been, we've been making pretty consistent progress over the last seven years that he's been here. To say the job is done, of course, it's not done. But this is the first time in a considerable period of time where the, the student achievement has continued to improve, even with the legislature being less than supportive in funding.
And finally, Corey, what grade would you give Dr. Grego?
First of all, one of my opponents just referred to our schools as failure factories. I want to make clear that our schools are not failures. The system has failed our students and we can fix it. Now, to Dr. Grego, I want to make mention that he has worked hard and he's done a great job, but we can do better. So I'd give him a B+. I've seen his commitment to our students, our teachers, and our community, and I commend him for that, but I certainly think we can do better. For a long time, as a member of the NAACP Education Committee, we advocated a year ago for the district to embrace more distance learning, to include a hybrid model in the curriculum. That call fell on deaf ears. And here we are in the middle of a pandemic and we are trying to get through it. And I definitely think if he would have hurt us then, we wouldn't be grappling with some of the issues that we are now. But good, better, best, don't stop giving until your good becomes better and your better is best.
Thanks, Corey. Caprice, I'm going to ask you this question. This comes from a listener, someone who's listening in here. "Pinellas County Schools continue to see black students being suspended and arrested disproportionately higher than the white students. How do you propose addressing this specific disparity?"
Thank you. I propose providing more resources such as wraparound services, mental health services, and life skill programs to support our youth. I also propose that we have clear policies regarding arresting our students. We should not be arresting our students. We should have prevention in place so where our staff are able to de-escalate situations and that our resource officers or school officers are only encountering our students if there is an outside threat.
Carl, do you want to take that question as well?
Well, one, I think we need to make sure that we use our school resource officers so that students have a positive experience with police officers. And then the, what Melrose Elementary's done, which is they've just rebuilt that as a community school where they do have those wraparound services. We need to have more partnerships with, whether it's mental health or social services or life skills or the various catch-ups and programs like Summer Bridge, because one of the things that results in students misbehaving is the student who is behind, if he's to misbehave, is less likely for you to notice that he can't do the work. And so catching kids up is the long-term way that we, that will reduce disruptive behavior. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a learning experience that we have to both train the, all the people who work with the school system and, and train the students to how to deal with stress and anxiety. And sometimes the, the issue is, is an issue at home that we need to make sure that we
Corey, I know you addressed this briefly in some of your earlier comments, but do you want to take this one head-on?
I sure will. Thank you. Again, like I said, we have, I think the district reported last year, about 20,000 black students currently enrolled in Pinellas County Schools. But again, they were suspended 52,000 times. Now, there's three to one when it comes to white students to black students. White students significantly outnumber black students in Pinellas County. But we have to look at this issue as not a black or a white issue, but a right or a wrong issue. And the way we right so many of these wrongs is again, by getting back to building our relationships with the law enforcement community. I want to look at revamping the role of the school resource officer. Let's make sure that our officers are building relationships and not instilling fear in students or staff members. The way that we're going to increase our graduation rate and decrease our school suspension and dropout rate is by embracing the family component. We've got to get back to that village mentality. Each one reach one. It has to be about us reaching our students and reaching our parents where they're at. We can't sit in this ivory tower in Largo and expect the issues to fix itself. We've got to be on the street, at the ground level, in the trenches, which is where I've been for the last decade, working and finding plausible solutions for the same age-old problems that no one's tried to fix.
Sharon, would you like to take that question?
So first of all, I would look at the data to see where these suspensions are occurring, what what type of suspensions, and notice if some of the kids are repeat offenders. That's the first thing. Sort of analyze the data and, and target where the problems may be. But also, developing, I noticed that the former principal at Melrose Elementary had tons of community involvement. So schools bringing in volunteers and community support to help mentor and guide students is one strategy that I used as a principal. We need to hire the best teachers and put them in some of the schools where the most need is. We need strong teachers in schools where students tend to have the most problems. Having wraparound services like Melrose and maybe some of the other schools is important, and providing ongoing support. I like to see, I understand why Dare was taken away, but it was a great program. And the kids saw that the offices in a different light, because they would go into the classroom and work with the students and teach them different units. So that's, that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. There's a couple of questions along this line, so I'll ask it this way. If you were a member of the school board right now, what would you be doing to address coronavirus with schools opening in, what is it, about six weeks? Carl, do you want to start with that one?
Well, I think we're going to have to look at a series of options. You know, there'll be some places where we can provide sufficient social distancing that we can teach the kids in the traditional fashion. I know the school system is just purchasing of, you know, 20,000 computers, and actually that's an opportunity to, to find out, you know, which of these students are the least computer literate, to focus on that. We're going to have to do some distance learning. And I think it's going to, it's going to have to be a combination. You may have situations where it's three days a week at school and two days a week distance, so as to reduce the number of students. You know, in all candor, if the community would behave responsibly and stay out of the bars, et cetera, we would have a chance of turning this around, because in the long run, you want to get back to traditional learning. But I think social distancing, masks, hand sanitizers, distance learning, all those things are going to have to happen.
Caprice, do you want to take that on? If you were a member of the school board now, what would you be advocating for getting ready for school in August with coronavirus still?
Thank you. Among us. I've been watching the workshops and the school board meetings, so I am aware that the district plans on purchasing 500,000 masks, and at the last workshop, they reviewed the budget. Going off of having the $1.5 billion budget, we need to focus on safety, just making safety a priority. As I see what other counties are doing regarding going virtual, or having a hybrid where it's a face-to-face virtual, or they're alternating, I think it's important that we put all options on the table and really think about the safety of our students and our staff. I also think that we have to be realistic. With the summer camps closing due to COVID-19, we have to prepare that something like that could happen in our schools. So having medical professionals with us alongside other professionals as we plan on reopening our schools is very important.
Cory, how about you?
First and foremost, we have to govern with facts and not feelings. Yes, we have 500,000 masks in requests. We've also purchased 40,000 laptops for students between grades four through nine, but again, there's a huge gap that we're missing and we have to worry about closing. You know, education as we know it has changed forever. The traditional brick and mortar classroom is no more. Due to the COVID pandemic, some children will return to the physical classroom and some children will not, due to multiple reasons outside of our control, but it's important that we give students and our families options. And that begins by listening to them. Listen to the families, but also listen to the students. Return the power to the people. Let's make it about the people and not the politician. We don't have all the answers, but I guess what? The community does. We can work with people who don't look like us, may not live on the same street as us, but they have facts and they have opinions and their value. Now, get the pulse of the community and take that information back to the board. I really commend the district for doing a survey, but again, how do the students feel? I'm proud that my campaign tomorrow night will be hosting a virtual forum, where we'll be listening to students across District Seven to hear their opinion about what they think school should look like come August. Do we have a traditional school setting? Is it a hybrid model or 100% virtual? At the end of the day, it's not our decisions, but we're not sitting in those classrooms. We're not in those chairs of students or teachers. It's up to the schools and the community.
And Sharon, how about you? If you were a member of the school board now, how would you be dealing with coronavirus?
Well, I think the district is on track as far as addressing that issue. They're doing the survey, they're getting input from all areas of the community, including parents. I actually looked at the survey and had a checkoff on the different areas that should be covered, like school board, I mean, sorry, the school buses, the classroom, common work areas, that kind of thing. Providing sanitizing products, making sure the classrooms are clean every day and ongoing throughout the day. The only thing that I saw that I would recommend is ongoing communication with the families, employees, and the community with possible virtual forums, or even robocalls, letting parents know what's going on at every stage of the development of the plan.
Okay, thanks Sharon. Carl, this one's going to be for you because it's asked directly of you, from Adam Smith, who's watching in here. It says, Carl, you've been widely recognized as a progressive and effective voice in St. Petersburg, but how would you respond to the concern that you are running in a district designed for minority representation? I want to give you a minute to answer that.
Well, the district is large, it's a quarter of a million people. It's diverse, it's about 20% African-American. I will tell you that, you know, when I was on the city council, I represented a district that was roughly 50/50. I got more than 70% of the vote each time I ran, because I spent a lot of time in the community and tried to fix what I could fix. You know, I, I was in the most challenged neighborhoods virtually every day, and so I tried to have a good, a good connection to that, most particularly around Melrose Elementary and Campbell Park. And so I would expect to continue to make these same efforts to make sure that I understand the full gravity of my responsibility to, to reach out to the entire community.
Okay, thank you. Caprice, this question comes in from Elizabeth Siplin. She wants some concrete examples of how you would bring D and F schools up to the A and B level.
By providing additional resources to our schools, having professional development as well as incentives. At Fairmont Park, some of the things that I did recently is rechartered the Fairmont Park PTA. I currently serve as the treasurer. Oftentimes, schools want to provide services, but it's not in their budget, they don't have the money to do it. So what I did was I rechartered the PTA and raised money. Raised money for shirts that students could use for uniforms, raised funds to promote the parent support group and PBIS, as well as celebrations, academic celebrations. In order to bring our schools up, we have to bring our families back to our schools. We have to have community engagement. We have to put our students first, and put our money where our priorities are. If we want to see those schools improve, we're going to have to invest in them.
And Sharon, how about you? How would you take, what are some concrete ideas you'd have for taking D and F schools and turning them into A and B schools?
Okay, so as I mentioned, one size doesn't fit all. Well, I didn't say that before, but I'm saying it now. One size does not fit all in schools that are underperforming. For example, when I was a principal, I brought in several programs in order to bring the school from an F to a C. School uniforms were one of them. The second was a Montessori program, which required all the restructuring the entire program. It's a different way of teaching and learning. All the teachers had to be trained. We had a grant that allowed them to earn a master's degree in Montessori strategies with Barry University, and those that didn't want to stay, they left. But, so bringing in this new program, we had an extended school day. We brought in volunteers to Melrose. It just takes more, it's, it's, it takes more to, to find what it's in order to make this, whatever strategies you're trying to implement work. Families, family involvement is very, very important. That is number one. So sometimes it doesn't look like with the parent walking in the door of the school, you have to find creative ways to get parents involved, whether it's a phone call, a text, or these days, doing a virtual meeting like this.
Thanks Sharon. Cory, do you want to take that question?
First of all, again, I want to make mention, you know, that my campaign, Cory Givens, is about new ideas and new solutions to the same age-old problems. As my opponents have made mention, they've all been around, they've all been in politics or in education in one way or another for a combined total of over 50 years, but yet they've done nothing to improve our quality of life or raise our standard of living. And so we need to address that. And so my platform involves the community. It's a well-rounded, student-centered approach. We need to intensify community involvement. That includes having a variety of representation on these boards, in community social groups and organizations, they need to be present. Businesses need to have involvement working with our school districts. You know, this is a constitutional office that we're talking about. We need someone with a background of connecting businesses, connecting students, and connecting our community. We need to devise a long-term plan that's going to address closing the achievement gap and shutting down the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm tired of seeing young black men and women being locked up and thrown behind bars and their future's going down the drain. We spend more, more money in imprisoning our young black people than we do putting them through college and furthering their education. And lastly, I want to motivate families. That's what we're missing. We're missing the family component. It's not about me, but it's about we. It's about returning the power to the people and putting our students first. You can visit my website at corygivens.com for more information.
So one of our listeners, viewers, is interested in knowing about your policies about having police officers inside schools. They're a little concerned about it from reading the preamble to their question, but how about that? How do I give you each a minute, starting with Sharon? Do you think there should still be police officers inside our schools?
Okay, yes, I have no problem with police officers being inside the school. I would feel much safer, I've worked at schools where we had police officers on campus all day, every day, every school day. And they're the ones who are trained to carry guns, and they're the ones who are trained to protect us. So I have no problem with it.
Caprice, over to you. What do you think about police officers in our schools?
I value the role that our school officers play, and I know that there's been times where we've heard gunshots, or there's been an aggressive situation and our police officer was able to intervene. So I support our police officers being at our schools, but I do not support them handling behavior of situations that can be handled by an administrator or school staff. I would also like to let you know that I have been formally endorsed by Sunco's Police Benevolent Association. And in my conversation with them, I made it clear that I support having SROs, but it's also important that there's a line drawn between the intervention that occurs. Thank you.
Cory, do you want to take that on?
Well, you know, although I value the role that our police officers play in our schools, I don't think we need them at the elementary level. I've done a tour prior to COVID of every school in District Seven, and I was visiting Perkins Elementary, and I met a little guy who ran up to me one day. He was dressed in a yellow shirt, black pants, and I asked him who he was, and he said, "I'm the Community Patrol Officer, that's who I am." He was dressed up as a school patrol officer. And he saw him in a positive light. I want to make sure that that's emulated and reflected throughout the district. You know, we should instill love for our officers and not fear. I come from a family of law enforcement individuals. Some of my closest friends, Officer Boyd and Officer Hawkins, are SROs, and they agree with me that we need reform. You know, we need to look at the role that our officers play in our schools and, and use that to help teach students how to become specifically engaged, and how to deal with them, how to deal with officers if they find themselves in a sticky situation, so they walk away from that situation alive.
Carl, do you want to take that on?
Well, a couple of things. One, I think you want to have officers, if you're going to have somebody with a gun at a school, you want it to be an officer, not a teacher. Secondly, I think they really have to play point in the, in the area of security at schools. You know, we've had, of course, quite a number around the country of mass shootings, and you want, you want the officer to be the person that is, is the lead on that. And then the other thing is, is that the officers have the opportunity to provide positive experiences with teenagers. And so, you know, I would hope those would be the primary functions that they would serve. You know, we need students to, to interact with police officers from a positive experience, not just, not just when it's a negative experience, and I think that would be beneficial for both.
Great, thank you for the answer. There's been a couple of questions about charter schools, so perhaps we ask it, you know, what's the appropriate role for charter schools in Pinellas County? Cory, do you want to take that on?
First of all, let me begin by saying that I support saving our public schools. Right now, our public schools are on attack. In the Florida Legislature, we are giving more money to private charter schools than we are to our public schools, and there's far more public schools than our charter schools. So something's wrong with that. Recently, our board just approved three new charters here in Pinellas County. One of them were, were denied out of four. That's a problem. You know, you have to look at the money. These dollars, when the student goes into a charter school, suppose they were to transfer out of that charter school, the money doesn't flow back into Pinellas County schools. So we need to make sure that the, the dollars follow the student, and also, if we are to give dollars to charter schools, we need to hold them accountable, accountable to the same policies and practices as our public schools, because at the end of the day, they're taking public dollars.
Sharon, do you want to take that question? What role does charter, do charter schools play and should play in Pinellas County?
Yes, it provides a choice for the parents, and parents want choice. So I think they have their place. Some are successful and they're, they help with the student achievement and et cetera, but others are not. When they're, they need to be monitored by the school board, which they are, they're not performing, they're usually dismissed. For example, we had a school like that a couple of years ago, maybe three, that wasn't performing, and, you know, it went before the board, and they were let go. But I agree, I'm all for public schools. My kids went through public schools. I could have put them in a private school, but I believe in the public school system. And the monies, as Cory mentioned, it's diverted to those charter schools, and it seems to be a way of, of the state and the federal government lately to recommend charter schools and give them the money, especially the private ones. But I believe in public education, and we need to invest in our public education. Thank you.
Caprice, do you want to take that?
Yes, hi. I am a proud public education advocate, and I have lobbied and met with our current representatives regarding public education and the impact that charter schools has on the dollars that are supposed to or meant for public schools. Charter schools aren't held to the same accountability, and they are, some have discriminatory practices. Public schools are open to all kids. So what I look for as it relates to the school board, school board members are required to approve the application or reject the application. approve the application or reject the application. But again, I am a proud public education supporter.
Carl, charter schools, what role do they play in Pinellas County? Or should they play?
Well, you may know that we've had 10 charter schools and the county go bust, usually with just less than 10 days' notice for the school, the public school system to gather up all those children and educate. I think the fundamentally thing that's unfair is that the legislature gives charter schools greater flexibility than they do the public schools. The irony is they give them the flexibility so they have more ability to succeed. And if you, so if you're going to have charter schools with flexibility, you ought to have, the local school system have more ability to be, to be nimble and flexible. But they have, you know, as an example, just the last time, the, the capital budgets were split between the charter schools and the public schools, even though the public schools had about 15 times as many students, they were split evenly. So we've had a, the legislature has particularly had their foot on the gas trying to promote charter schools at the expense of public schools. And that's just not fair.
Okay, we have approximately five minutes left, so probably one question here. If you'd all keep your answer to a minute. Michael Kingsford is interested in the school board, the school district's environmental footprint, given that we live in a county that's susceptible to sea level rise and other environmental factors. So he asks, what will you commit to do to improve the school district's environmental footprint? Caprice, do you want to take that?
I would commit to looking more into solar panels for our schools as well as our waste management. Currently at our schools, there's a lot of waste from boxes to paper. So just finding other ways that we can support recycling.
Cory, you want to take that? The school district's environmental footprint? What would you do to lessen it or to improve it?
First of all, I'd look at using recycled materials, whether it's IT or paper. You know, that's one way that we can look at lessening our carbon footprint. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that we leave our students not just schools, but an environmental world that they can be proud of, that's healthy, that's safe. We want to make sure that we're advocating for the preservation of our schools, that we're preserving them. And like my opponent said, look at green practices, you know, whether it's solar panels or what have you. We need to look at what's economically efficient for our schools and what's most cost-effective. You know, I'm proud of the work that I've given to the Suncoast Sierra Club, you know, dedicating my work and my years of service to working sure that we advocate for the preservation of our environment.
Carl, how about you answer that one next on the school district's environmental footprint?
The school system should follow rather the similar path that I was able to get the city of St. Pete to follow. Where as every time you do renovation or construction of a school, you want to make sure that it's much more energy efficient. It's possible for a new school to be 40 to 50% more energy efficient with just a few percent increasing in initial costs. We, we should be, begin converting our diesel bus fleet to electric buses, which have a long-term payback. And so you want to use all your, your capital budget to lower your operating costs. It would be reasonable to, to aim for between a $6 and $10 million a year reduction in fuel and energy use if we, if we pursued that path and reduce our air pollution by about 40%.
And Sharon, how would, what would you do to try to tackle the school district's environmental footprint?
So the Sierra Club have programs that they are to partner with all the schools in Pinellas County. So I would advise the, the school district to develop a partnership where more, more schools are involved. I looked and there's not that many. There may be one, I think, in Dunedin. But promoting conservation, waste management, recycling materials, zero-scape planting with the, the plant operators focused on conserving water and planting the types of plants that don't require a whole lot of water. Just doing green practices, reinforcing it in the classrooms, recycling plastic, you know, those are great programs that students that I've been involved with practice at their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all of those thoughtful and very insightful questions, very informative answers, panel. Thank you. A special thank you to the candidates. Good luck with your races and joining us today and everyone who participated in the Suncoast Tiger Bay Virtual Event. We hope you will join us July 8th. That's our next one. Please write that one down. July 8th at noon. That's our next virtual event. It's called Coming Together: A Discussion on Race, Equity, and the Future of Policing in Pinellas County. So with that, thank you so much for your attention. Thanks for joining us and enrolling with this new formatting. We're, we're excited to still provide you some programming and still keep in touch. So please stay safe, wash your hands, and we'll see you soon.